Good evening, the time is seven thirty-four and I would like to call to order the January twenty-third meeting of the Norwalk Common Council. If you will please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag. Pledge allegiance. And have a nice space on that. Into the ripoff for which it is saying, on nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice. Thank you. Dirk, if you please call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Present.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najulski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seagull.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins. Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur. Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Present.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Ms. McMur. We have fourteen, we have a forum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of January ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan? Any corrections, deletions or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Opposed? Abstentions? One abstention, Ms. Najulski-Eichner.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next item is public participation. Do we have anybody waiting to, anybody in the audience that wishes to address the council? Nobody, okay, now somebody online? Okay, then let's move forward with resigns and appointments. The first resignation is Catherine Knight-Sellschop from the Conservation Commission alternate to become a regular on the commission. So, under appointments, we have Catherine Knight-Sellschop, Conservation Commission regular. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, whoops.
Yes, can I speak to that motion, your honor? Your mayor? Once again, I'm not looking around. A little bit undone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've known Catherine Sellschop for five or six years now. She has been an excellent partner in conservation. She sat on the Conservation Commission as an alternate for a period of time. She also sat on the Norwalk Land Trust, was an excellent board member. And now she is moving from being an alternate to a regular member. So I'd like to recommend her to this council for that purpose. She's terrific, absolutely very knowledgeable and a very hard worker. Looking forward to working with her on that Conservation Commission.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. The next few appointments, we have one to the Police Commission and one for the Fire Commission. As you know, previously, the appointments were made solely by the mayor, but now it's in the charter that the council approves the appointments. And this is my commitment to appointing a diverse Police Commission and diverse Fire Department Commission, thinking, you know, in terms of, again, our equality and equity programs. So the first one would be Nate Sumter to the Police Commission. Do I have a motion, Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to move the appointment of Nate Sumter to the Police Commission. I've known Nate for quite a while and in addition to his general contracting business and his work with the Stanford Housing Authority, we know him well as a member of our zoning commission for a good tenures, many, many years, as well as a chair of that commission. Nate has been a strong advocate for equitable housing and for equitable hiring practices. He's been a leader in the South Norwalk community and for all of Norwalk, in fact. He is an ace tennis pro, maybe not everyone knew that about Nate, but I got to know Nate as the husband of my beloved principal, Linda Sumter, at Ponus Ridge Middle School. So the two of them have just, you know, they're, they're just such a strong couple. And, you know, I do know that Nate is, is, you know, taking good care of Linda and I just wanted to acknowledge that. And thank you so much, Nate, for your willing to serve on the Police Commission as a civilian and as a really important member of the South Norwalk and Norwalk community.
Thank you, well said. Any other comments? Ms. Ayers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Sumter is a jewel of Norwalk. He is such a person rich with knowledge and he has a heart to serve. And the Police Commission will be blessed and definitely highlighted by his humor and his wit and his need to support the community in all that he does. And so, again, I echo and support the words of my colleague and say that Mr. Sumter is a needed plus to the commission for the police.
Thank you. Further comments or discussion, Mr. Goldstein?
Having served with Nate on the zoning commission, I, I just want to say he is someone from whom I have learned a lot. And one of Nate's best qualities, in addition to his, his humor and just good nature in general, is he is not afraid to ask tough questions. And, and he has no problem analyzing the issue, cutting to the heart of the, you know, the most important center of the issue and asking the exact right question at the exact right time. So I, I think Nate Sumter is someone from my normal perspective. And I think he will be a welcome addition to the profession.
Thank you. Mr. Sutton?
Yes, I also religiously, he's at my church, Grace Baptist in Norwalk here. And he's the chairperson of the men's ministry there. He served diligently, he and his wife both are deacons at Grace Baptist Church. Honorable people, humble people. And I think he would make a good addition to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, it's my pleasure to nominate him for appointment. So all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have appointment of Rabbi Eda Paschkine to the Fire Commission. Again, trying to make the commission as diverse as possible. And I think she's also a good appointment. So do I have a motion? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rabbi Paschkine, it's the Rabbi of Congregation Beth El and has been, right next door, Congregation Beth El, has been since 2015. She is a mother of two wonderful daughters, someone who is a truly dedicated member to the community. And one of the things about Norwalk that I love is that we are so lucky and have such wonderful clergy in our city. And Rabbi Paschkine is absolutely someone who has time and again helped both the Jewish community in Norwalk, but also the interfaith community with large. It's someone who is dedicated to strengthening our interfaith community here. Also another note, in case you're wondering if she's a Jewish mother or not. Last year, when I was Memorial Day parade, I was walking down the street and she saw me and she, and she shouted from the side, "Are you wearing sunscreen?" She's wondering if she's a Jewish mother, she. For all those reasons and many more, I, I happily will vote for Rabbi Paschkine to be member of the Fire Commission.
And her five hundred shares of See and Ski. And any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have two appointments to the Harbor Management Commission. Alan Kibbe and Matthew Gifford. We could move those together. Do I have a motion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move the reappointments of Mr. Kibbe and Mr. Guilford. Both have served previously on the Norwalk Harbor Management Commission since 2019. Mr. Kibbe is currently, currently in, in 2023 was the chairman. And they, if you look at their resume, they both have spent a tremendous number of years around the water. They have deep expertise in terms of being part of various clubs and organizations that focus on how we manage our sound, how we manage the coastline. They just have a passion for this type of commitment. And they would be welcome additions to continue to serve on the Harbor Management Commission. So I'd like to bring that name forward for reappointment.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. And again, we have two reappointments to the Historical Commission that we can move forward. Mark Jackson and Lisa Wilson-Grant, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shanahan?
No, Mr. Frayer.
Mr. Again, you know, I, I'm not dyslexic, but. Mr. Frayer?
Okay, Mark Jackson and Lisa Wilson-Grant, I've both served, I've served with both of them on the Historical Commission. Mark Jackson is, is the go-to guy on that commission. He knows more about what's going on in Norwalk and the history of many of the buildings and everything that we, we take a look at. Lisa Grant also is, is, I've known for a number of years. She's an accomplished writer. She's written several books. She's the, the ultimate sleuth when it comes to finding out information about historical or potentially historical sites. Both of these people will be an added addition, will be a continued asset to the Historical Commission going forward.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Nothing for Mrs. Frayer? All in favor?
All of us.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, under my remarks, I just have one. Thank you all for attending the State of the City address this evening. I want to just notify people that if they were unable to attend or watch it, the full recording is on the YouTube page of the City of Norwalk or Norwalk's Facebook page, which you can replay the entire thing if you can't sleep. I shared, I shared my goals and priorities for my sixth term and highlighted some of the administration's accomplishments during the past ten years in office. As I said, my address serving the residents of Norwalk continues to be an honor of a lifetime. And our efforts wouldn't be possible without all of our community members, our community leaders, our common council, our Board of Education and all the people who work for the City of Norwalk and do a professional job, day in and day out, serving our community with pleasure and serving our community in a professional manner. So again, I want to thank our residents and thank you for the opportunity to serve. Next, we have Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we move on to five A one? No, five. Yeah. Five A one. Yeah. Yes. Mr. Shanahan, please. Authorize the Corporation Council to retain attorney Steve Mednick to provide legal counsel to the city to advise the Common Council and a charter, and a Charter Revision Commission in connection with the next mandated Charter Revision in 2020. That was my consent. We move down to the appointment. We have an appointment of Esther Marullo as the Assistant City Clerk, new Assistant City Clerk for the City of Norwalk. And so, I think I did that a little.
Yeah.
We have to vote on.
Yeah, I think this is vote on.
We have to vote on. And I had on vote it and Jim's going to speak on.
Okay. So you know it.
I moved it.
Yes, okay. I've known Esther for quite a while now. I think she's just absolutely the most perfect person for this position. She was born in Costa Rica, came to the U.S. She went through the Norwalk school system.
Yes, me too.
She went through the Norwalk school system. She's a product of our public school system. She went on to UConn where she got a degree in psychology and then went on to get a master's in, in cognitive neuroscience, which I think will help her in this job tremendously.
I need you in the office.
She also was a research assistant at Gartner Group, which is a very high-level IT consulting firm. She and her husband Peter live in Rowayton and they have a beautiful four-year-old daughter. And I can't think of anybody that could do a better job than Esther. So I just welcome her to the council, to the city.
Any other comments? So go back up and just now, I guess we can say all in favor? Okay. Looks unanimous. Any opposed, upset, looks unanimous? So now again, here we go. So Esther, if you want to say a few words, you want to come up? But what I'm going to say as you're coming up, because you're going to come up now. We've been looking for this position for court over the last two years and we are finally happy to have someone as capable as you who's interested in it and very eager to start with us to, to, to do the work, to help us move forward with the work that the council wants you to do. Not just the things that are mandated for us to do, but some of those things that help us do our job better and help us relate to the community a lot better and be more transparent. And so we're just happy to have you.
Thank you. Just wanted to say that part of the reason that I was interested in the position is because generally I find work that helps others accomplish what they are supposed to do in a more efficient way very rewarding. And I already have a long list of items to get, you know, hit the ground running. So I'm very excited and thank you to everybody. I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
And so the reading of the consent calendar.
We have to vote on item one. And separate from the consent calendar. Steve Beddick, we never voted on it.
It's just that I was unconcerned.
No, I don't. It's not on the consent calendar.
Okay. So we'll read it again. Authorize Corporation Council to retain attorney Steve Mednick to provide legal counsel to the city to advise the Common Council and a Charter Revision Commission in connection with the next mandated Charter Provision in 2020. Ms. Najulski-Eichner?
I'd be happy to move this item. We've been very grateful for Steve's work on the prior Charter Revision and we are very much looking forward to working with him on a number of things coming out of that Charter Revision and also on a new Charter Revision.
Any more comments?
I just want to highlight that because we had our first Charter Revision in over a hundred years, so we're really lucky to have him help us move forward and tackle some more issues on the Charter. So I support us to take it again.
I also wanted to add, he's been incredibly accessible, educational. His depth of knowledge of this, how this state, not only just the city runs and how different municipalities run, gives us a lot of options and conversation and advice. So I'm really grateful for his guidance and welcoming to me, to the team and bringing me up to speed. And I know he's done that for others. So I think he's just a great addition.
Any other comments? Mr. Burnett?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, I worked extremely closely with Mr. Attorney Magnet in the past year, building up to the Charter Revision vote. And I, I would say the, the most the biggest value that I found is that he, he can clearly explain each and every item in layman's terms and take the legalese out of, you know, the, the item. And that, to me, I found as being extremely helpful. And I'm, I'm sure he will continue in that mode going forward as we continue to look at future Charter Revisions. One item I would like to ask, and I, you know, it, it, it doesn't show the dollar amount here, but I think it's important for the public to know what is the anticipated dollar amount that we're in, because this is an investment and it's important that we make this investment. So if we have that, that would be helpful.
Well, you know, we, we pay for his time on an hourly basis and set forth in the retainer agreement that was provided within, in the packet with his rates that were the same as, as last time. It's hard to know exactly what that cost is going to be. We don't know what the time is going to be ultimately. But one thing I do want to ensure is that, you know, he's been working with the Law Department and in a manner of, we want to use his expertise as being a leading expert in the state and, and, and doing Charter Revision work throughout the state. But there's, there's certain assignments that could be done from the Law Department. So to the extent that it's, there's a research assignment, analysis that can be done by some of the Law Department, he assigns that to us to try and minimize the amount of cost to the city. So he, he also works with us in a very efficient manner to ensure that, you know, there, there's not work that, that he's doing that could be done from the Law Department. So we've been working really well with him too, to try and minimize that cost. Because his discounted hourly rate for the city is $260 an hour. As far as the overall cost estimate for the total amount of the engagement, it, it's hard to predict. And clients ask that all the time, "How much is this going to cost?" You know, this, this, this lawsuit depends on where, where we resolve it. We could try to get a better estimate from him or projection as to costs. I, I think maybe in a few months when he, you know, he gets a better understanding of what the engagement is going to entail. So my recommendation would be, if you feel comfortable, that we get it up, an estimate from him in a few months to report back to the council for cost. I think at this point it would be a guess at best.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We on to, now we're on to the consent calendar? And Councilmember Wiggins, Mr. Wiggins will read the consent calendar.
Excuse my congestion, I'm a little congested, but so we should start with Common Council Committees. Seven A Financing Claims Committee, accept and approve the report of the Claims Committee dated January twenty twenty-four. Number two. For information purposes only, narrative on tax collections dated twenty, January twenty twenty-four. Three, for information purposes only, monthly tax collectors report dated December twenty twenty-three. Four, approve ARPA transfer request for Norwalk Community Recovery Fund. ARPA, ARPA account note, ARPA account noted in the amount of $1,170,062. Dreamy Hollow, vets, $372,013.56. Stormwater Management Plan, $48,462.06. Account noted. APW-07 Coastal Resilience, citywide, $350,000. Account noted, municipal solid waste disposal, seven, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-three, five hundred and fifty-three. Account noted, digitalization documentation, $190,972. It's $972, account noted. AEC thirteen, business navigation online, $130,000. Five, approve ARPA transfer request for Norwalk Community Carver, Norwalk Community Carver, ARPA account noted in the amount of $500,000. Account noted. ARPA General Purpose, $400,000, count noted. AFAFN-01 Fiber Optic Cable, $71,677.50, account noted. Digitalization Documentation, $28,322.50. Seven B Community Service Committee. One A authorize the mayor, Harry Rilling, W. Rilling, to execute any and all documents necessary to apply for and accept funds from the Connecticut Department of Public Health in the amount of $495,935.38 for the period beginning March one, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six for the enhanced detection, response, civilian surveillance and prevention of COVID-19. One B authorize the mayor, Harry Rilling, W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments or amendments as may be necessary to implement enhanced detection, response, civilian surveillance and provision of COVID-19 activities for the period of March first, twenty twenty-two through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Seven B. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all amount, all agreements, documents, instruments or amendments as many as may be necessary with the Carbon Foundation, Inc. to provide financial assistance for low-income families who elementary school-age children attend Norwalk Public Schools in the amount of $500,000, ARPA account noted. Seven B. Three, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all amount, all agreements, document, instruments or amendments as may be necessary with the local prevention council in the amount of $20,000 to the fiduciary positive direction. Ninety Post Road, West, WS Port, Connecticut, oh-six-eight-eight-zero. CO, the, the Norwalk Partnership, account noted.
Thank you, Councilmember Wiggins. You've heard the consent calendar? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Next item is item seven A six, Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we, I read this item, let the record show that Councilmember Melissa Murray is releasing herself and leaving the meeting at this time. On the Financial Claims Committee, item six, approve ARPA transfer requests for mayor initiative, ARPA account number noted in the amount of $450,000 from the ARPA account as noted, AEC fourteen, administrator for ARPA, Account number noted, AEC ten, innovation grants for startup, $130,000. ARPA account noted, AEC two, digitalization documentation amount, one hundred, excuse me, I'd like to move this item and speak to it.
Mr. Burnett?
Thank you. The, the, the funding that was reallocated from various ARPA accounts as noted is going towards our sustainability initiative, which you very eloquently outlined during your State of the City address. And it's moving us towards becoming the greenest city in the state of Connecticut. And we have with us Chief of Economic and Community Development, Jessica Vanacek, to provide a little more detail on this particular issue.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Vanacek, Chief of Economic and Community Development. So I don't know that I can say it any better than our mayor or any better than Council President Burnett, but, you know, we're really excited to be able to move this forward. The staff are really passionate, the departments are really passionate about becoming the greenest city in all of Connecticut. And I think that, you know, in the work that we've done, even looking at how much funding is currently being invested in the city for resiliency and sustainability, we know that the city is very serious and that we are very committed. And part of this $450,000 is not only to bring on someone to be able to help support and lead the efforts that we're taking on at the city, but also to lead all of those initiatives that the mayor spoke about during his State of the City speech. Right now, we have almost $100 million in, in city investment in sustainability and resiliency. And it comes in resiliency planning, it's coming in some of the flood mitigation work that we're doing. It's in the more than $1 million of tree plantings we're doing. As the mayor spoke about, we are doubling sidewalks, we're doubling bike lanes. We are really focused on being able to think of redevelopment near our train stations, thinking about first and last mile, working with the Transit District on micro transit and also on rerouting the bus routes to be able to ensure that people have the ability to take the bus and they have access to multimodal transit. Another thing that we're really focused on is the health of the harbor and being able to think about a strategic plan for the harbor, thinking about how commercial and industrial use is happening today and what recreational look. use is happening today and what recreational use looks like and being able to encourage people using different access points through the water as well. And so, you know, we're really excited about this. Right now, we currently have the RBA leading some of the efforts. We have DPW leading some of the efforts. Some of those efforts are in economic community development under planning and zoning. And so not only does the Office of Sustainability speak to the level of commitment that the city has, it will also allow us to think differently about grants, think differently about how federal and state money comes in through the door, being able to work with different department heads and different chiefs to be able to drive these initiatives and make them that much more streamlined in a meaningful way. And we are doing a really good job now, but with the support that we would have through the Office of Sustainability, we'll be able to do that much more and be that much better. One of the things that we spoke about at the Finance Committee was the importance of having this office sit in the mayor's office. And the idea there is that each of our departments is working diligently on bringing in funds and being able to focus on these things. But we're, each of the departments also has different focuses. And with the Office of Sustainability being in the mayor's office, we have the ability for that person and those initiatives to work across all departments in a meaningful way and be able to drive that home as far as goals and missions go. As you know, we passed the Plan for Conservation and Development in 2019. That plan speaks to sustainability and resiliency. We also heard the mayor speak about the efficiency study that also speaks to resiliency and sustainability. So these are things that we know are being driven out of the mayor's office, but really actually out of the residents' hopes and dreams for the city of Norwalk and the want to be able to be the greenest city. And out of all of the community outreach that we've done in South Norwalk and other communities and neighborhoods, we hear the same thing, sidewalks and trees. We hear about flooding and we hear about all of these things that actually are just, they may not be specific. They may not be coming to us as resiliency and sustainability projects, but in reality, they actually are. And they intertwine with all of the work that we're already doing. And so, you know, we're really excited as a staff to be able to work with somebody who's dedicated to these things and be able to drive all of those initiatives that are not only going on now, but will be going on in the future. And that is what that $450,000 is committed to.
Any further questions or comments? Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Extentions? Motion carries unanimously and this can return. Thank you. I think that is the last item to come before the council. I'm sorry? Am I missing? Oh, waiting for Melissa. That door may be locked. Mr. Shanahan?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
I'm opposed. I am opposed.
We are adjourned, really? Okay. What do you want to talk?
Well, you didn't vote on it. Meeting's still going on.
Meeting's still going on. I just feel like saying something there. I, you know, what just happened today at our, during this participation? We all, this is America. We understand that this vitriol is not just siloed here in this little space of Norwalk, Connecticut. This is around the globe. This is what we're hearing and seeing across the country, and it is not good. But what I need to say to everybody around this table is that we are here to do the business of the city. And no one is going to stop us. We are a very diverse group, and this is the most diverse council that I think we've had in the city's history, and we should all be proud of that. And we've got work to do. And there's no words that are going to stop us. There's nobody that is going to stop us from completing the business of the city. It's unfortunate that this happens, but we're going to get past it. It's not new. It's unfortunate that in 2024, we're still dealing with this. But we are all here and we're going to be stronger together. We may not all agree, but we do agree that we are here together and we're here to work together and we're going to represent this city as best as we can. And, you know, to the folks who continue to do this, I feel sorry for you. This is all that you've got to do. But play pickleball or something. But I just wanted to say that. And I don't want us to overreact to any of this, but we have to just be diligent and support each other and do what we need to do. And I thank you and the police department and everybody who stepped up very quickly. It's not an easy thing to have folks come and say these derogatory things to us. It's not nice to hear the end word. I don't want to hear it. It's not nice to hear all these things, you know, about against us. I just had to say that. And, thank you, darling. Thank you.
Well done.
Now we can adjourn it. Yes, go ahead. Put my motion back on the board.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shanahan, all in favor? Opposed? Extentions? We are adjourned at 8:13 PM. Thank you all.